Recording in progress.
Calabine Ward, roll call.
Smith.
Weatherlin.
Carr.
Drucker.
Woods. An approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
I make a motion we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion made second, any council discussion? You're none, all favor I?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is claims. Pretty, uh, pretty short this month. Uh, full ringing to Culligan's for fifty-one dollars for chlorinating. Uh, will for probably a couple of weeks here. To a police department vehicle back to Hot Springs, three fifty. And then there was reimbursement for hotel rooms from the train they went to.
And then do you ask us what should reimburse us?
Yeah, well, we have to pay for them to give you a refund. You guys have different packet than I do?
Where's the rest of the packet, is that what he's arguing?
That's what he left me. I have a little packet because of the lot. Yeah, so.
How many police were there, two and maintenance office?
Two.
Two, so there was one truck, no trucks? The one truck, one of the trucks had a transmission problem, the transmission fluid is getting burnt. And what it does when it does that is it overheats the fluid and pushes on into. So Ford said to drain it all and change the filter, one of the port filter. We gotta drop the exhaust and drop the swing bar.
That's one of the good stuff?
Mm-hmm. Fifty thousand, fifty thousand miles on the, there's fifty-four thousand. And the other one, the expedition, he's been driving, it's pretty black too, so we just flushed it. Uh, I think in, um, just visiting with some guys, uh, when they were out doing, working the highway, I guess we're not, I don't know, just a little bit, uh, when they were out, a couple of years ago, we asked people, the officers here. I think this where that, a little bit came from. So hopefully, hopefully that cleaned it out for those who are expecting a truck. So it's a special fluid in there, it's only new special fluid, it's like fifty dollars a quart fluid, it's a super.
You're starting to need stuff.
Tool. Oh, yeah, where'd it look down?
Yeah.
I make a motion we accept the claims.
I second the motion.
Motion made second, any other council discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Financials. Nah, it's probably your own hand. I don't hold it up when I drop your shit in there. Man. Oh, here it is. Yes, I just, I just.
Judy, it's really big up there for you.
Cave along this side of the paper.
Make a motion we accept the financials.
Second motion.
Motion made second, any council discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Reports. Uh, this one for, uh, finalized, the, uh, lower building upgrades, we get all that signed, we had a meeting with the contractor and they are starting here pretty soon. No one will know they're even out there doing it, they'll do the electrical upgrade, the lower building, sort of the goings, so. They'll get you all that done. Little bit more on subdivisions and stuff, but nothing really moving, it's less questions being asked, so. Public Works, first you see it start painting a little bit, go to some cleaning, like tree trimming. The first cleanup of the year was pretty big, uh, they're playing with the chipper to see how that, how that's gonna work for them, so, you know, a lot of these things going. At some point they might have chips, we're not sure how we're gonna do that, whether you can load your own, we dump them in your yard or what. We'll see how that goes. They had a chipper out, we gotta run it and then chip the pile, I think someone already came and got them, so. Fire Department, extremely busy, four car crashes, six fires, and three false alarms. So it's, uh, getting busy and getting busy quick, hopefully it doesn't get much busier, it's hard. We're so shorthanded, the Fire Department doesn't have a lot of staff, so. In the summertime, we got people gone on vacation or gone just out doing things for the day, 'cause the weather's nice, our staff can get shorter and shorter. On the fire, Banana Lake, we got one truck out, but it was probably there a half hour, forty-five minutes, we forgot to sign the truck out, so. It just takes us a while to get there, there's people coming from other places, so. There might be a little slow response, but someone will get there. Police, are you the police?
You are.
May, uh, they're in for the court, Port Bala, creating evidence and legal updates and policies. What they're doing with that, there's, in the evidence room, there's evidence dating back over twenty years, it's never been purged. So they're working with the town attorney and the judge on how to just dispose of it, a lot of it's just evidence, it could be like empty whiskey bottles, or, by the way, what's interesting, there's, there's a whole bunch of marijuana pipes and marijuana, which is not legal, so. And then, but, I mean, it still has to be, the paperwork has to be done and disposed of properly, so. They're working on that, and then working on a policy to go forward, it's just already set so the other people don't have to reinvent the wheel. Uh, multiple arrests, this last month citations, eight vehicles, trailers marked for tow, and one vehicle on its tow. Eight car stops lead to four citations and jail. Ten criminal investigations and five citations issued in criminal investigation. Seventeen calls for service, ten investigative follow-ups, and twelve business chats. Alert. Library. Mind the library?
No, yeah, wait until you start.
Okay. Services to the public, limit is at one P M. on Fridays for month two. Paper craft starts at one P M. on Saturdays. Materials are provided Friday, June twentieth, when Hartshorn will be at the library to talk about micro reading. The book discussion, discussion group will discuss Forty Summer by David Valdacho Thursday, June nineteenth. And the Friends of Animal Order Two with Meg Sally and Tony Gachon on Saturday, May tenth, put really well. Maybe two people stop in to visit with Linda, and Linda asks that we convey a sincere thank you from her to all of you for making her service to the library and the community such a pleasure. Collection, the inventory is done, we're recalling hotspots as they come due. The hotspot program ends this month, and all hotspots will be turned off June sixteenth. Technology, we're looking for a new computer for the back office and exploring the logistics, uh, using it for zip appointments for patrons. The specific request has been for medical appointments. General administrative business, we did coverage May twenty-fifth. And we received the larger portion of the materials for Books in Search of Kids, and we are planning on starting a farmer's market with that on June twenty-first. The summer book sale will start sometime in the middle of June. We received three applications for the trustee position, one asked that their application be removed due to health concerns, one within city limits. We've sent the remaining application to the mayor for appointment. We did not, I did not get the paperwork in in time for this, have a council meeting, so we will wait for the mayor's action at the July first meeting. The library board will be at the library Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, at five P M. for the monthly meeting. The meeting is a week late due to us wanting to know what the main tax revenue is to finish up our budget and get into the town by the July first council meeting. New patrons, three, walk-ins, four hundred and seventy-four. Computer users, one hundred and thirty-eight, wireless users, nineteen, that we saw. Children, one hundred and thirty-six. Prints, five hundred and seventy-two, and copies, one hundred and twelve.
Thank you, Stroh. Zoning compliance, it's actually been a really busy month of questions. People are out there doing a lot of things, under our track and keep track of them. Just one of them I caught today, it was last month. Alameda's come to ask to drill a new well with their property. They drilled it across the road. I explained to them today they can't get their water from point A to point B until they come talk to you again, so.
What are they gonna do, go up the street?
Yep, I guess, so, I, I told them, that's fine when they're drilling it, but they gotta come talk to you in order to bring the water back onto their property. So what the deal was, the state requires them to be twenty-five feet away from the old well, the old well's like in the center of the yard. So they went twenty-five feet and put it right at the edge of buildings, or right at the edge of sidewalks, and so that's why they decided to go across the road, and I explained to them is, they gotta come back to you and talk to you about going under the road and what they're gonna do there, so. So we'll probably see that at the July meeting, Chris will be here in a couple of weeks to come up with a plan, and we'll get it all figured out and bring it to the council. So a lot of other questions, you'll see someone tonight actually come home, we're on the agenda, we spent a lot of time on the variance requests with Hans, it was tied up hours of time. I would guess man-hours of this office work, over fifty hours on this one, so. Just lots of, answer their questions, do they keep bringing the question back, word of gift. I keep telling them, council's the only one that can fix this. It should've been on the April gym, it should've been on the agenda, now it's on this agenda, so. You guys will think that tonight. So, we're, uh, move forward, most people are, uh, just looking at lots or what they can do on lots and different things, so, that's been busy. Parks and Recreation.
Try to get our many members together and have a meet.
And, uh, tribe's still on me, on me, on me, about escape partners, so.
Well, I don't have a problem with that lot on the other side of fence.
Yes, they're, um, they, they have not got their, the board that actually is in charge of that was supposed to come and meet a couple of different times, just hasn't been over here. Have been here but not been, just driving through, they swung in, looked at stuff, and left, so.
Where's the one in Dixon, it's, I mean, I can't see it from the road, I wanted to look at it.
Uh, I don't, actually don't.
Okay.
Drive a backstreet, it should take you long.
Well, I can't.
I'm, I'm wondering, it's over by, over by school.
Okay, probably.
I, I didn't ask, I asked for that one, I know the one in Pablo, as we turn the Pablo I G A on Light Road. Stop light there, you turn and go like back towards this way, going west.
Go west.
Uh, it's just a couple of blocks down, there's an elementary school's down, it's like across the street from it, just that one anyways. And that's a small one too, like what Dixon.
Maybe when I come back from market on Saturday, I'll swing.
Yeah, you can swing out, you can actually jump over the back road, you can come back around, that pulls some, nice drive. But anyways, that, that's, those two are, so, um, they're still talking about it, just, I haven't seen anybody really. New business, old business, moving on to new business, first item, variance request, Gwen Hansen, Gwen Hansen's property, back in, um, two thousand eight, there was a permit for zoning compliance, permit issued, to build a garage on the property. Twenty-five by forty shop, uh, if you look at the photo there, the twenty-five by forty shop with the setbacks and all that. At that time, uh, best I can remember, there's not a lot of paperwork on it, as you can see in the drawing. At that time, we had a zoning compliance officer, we actually had a zoning compliance board, so when things were the ordinary, the board had to meet. What they did is they made it move the garage back three more feet from where they have it. Off the side line of the street there, and thirteen feet off the alley. Is how I read this. When you go look at the property now, um, it's only about a foot off the alley, the garage is actually about, almost two feet on the city front. So if you have, the survey pins are there, you can look at that. So, that's what we, they found when they're, of course they're trying to sell the property, they want to go forward on getting that done, so. What the, what they're here to ask tonight is a, uh, a variance on the setback. And also, then what ends up happening is we put that in the, uh, on the paperwork bit at the county, that that's on the city property, so any owner down the road will know that also. Now what it does, it just got switched to the liability. One of the things about street right-of-way, there's, there are liabilities in the right-of-way, there's, Montana State Code has certain statutes, and when you put something in that right-of-way. And someone comes around the corner and hits the garage, who's liable? The garage's in the right-of-way, they, you know, so, uh, and that's why we have to do this paperwork and submit it, so it puts the liability on them, not on us, you know, and some of that stuff. This is only a couple of feet, it's not that big of a deal. There are some things in town that are quite ways in the right-of-way, but it's, things happen over time, but. The survey, it's been done, and that's what it shows.
So it's only a foot into the city right-of-way, about two and a half feet.
So if you look at the building, the building is a little over a foot, and they squish at the e. So if you go air, it's probably about a little over two feet, two and a half feet, I didn't get exactly, maybe it was just on here.
So historically, we granted these?
Historically, what we've done, uh, we've, we've done a few of these, and what we've found is, over time, surveys were done wrong, there was pins in the ground, someone thought that was a pin, but it really wasn't. You know, back to that same old thing, people are going off and hearing things about surveying, so. There are a lot of in town we've granted, the ambulance building we've granted, uh, I don't know if we did the, the old Ryner's or this garage, that is in the city right-of-way. The east end of the building is actually in the city alley. There are just a few that weren't happened, there's just somewhere on the credits. How this stuff happens, what happened here, I'm gonna guess, this was, the permit was given, and then there was either no follow-up, or they were looking at pins that weren't actually actual pins. That's, I don't know, I don't know.
So the question I have is when we grant this and say there's a fire and the garage burns down, do they have to build it back to the specs?
They have to meet, they have to meet today's, they have to meet the zoning requirements the day they build it back.
So more or less that two and a half feet will be gained by the town at that time?
They have to put it back in their property, so it would have to be, yep. I think, I think.
Really?
Yes.
I did have a question, I did, there was a couple of things I wanted to clear up.
Can, can you, is state, who's starting the list?
I can get that.
This is what, what this, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Um, on the survey that was done, um, it said that the e's were over on the city property, that the building itself wasn't. Now, we went off, the, the fence that were there when we had the building built, Bill Russell, and some other guy came out and looked, helped him, looked for him, made out the fence. Now, when we went to get, when it was surveyed this time, it came up totally different, I'm not sure why. A different survey company, I called down to county, they don't have a copy of the current, the new survey that was just done. But it did, it did, when the house is sold, if the building is destroyed for any reason, it would be, they're already aware that they would have to build a new guidelines.
So anyways, if we didn't grant it, they'd have to tear it down?
Correct.
Yeah, which would be.
Why? Sorry, you need to back off.
Yeah. It's all those things, that's why we go around and try and be a more, that's why we have public works and stuff, if someone's doing something, we try and get out there and look just because of this. And a lot of people, you're really mad at us for doing that, but it saves you from doing this stuff. This has been a big deal for Gwen, because she's been trying to sell the place, and then as soon as the appraiser, you know, people come look at it, they see the problem, whether they're reporting that to the lender, and then the lender doesn't wanna loan on it, so it's been a real hardship for her.
Yeah.
It's been hard on her, 'cause she's trying to, you got people wanting to buy it, but it's being held up.
By down the street.
Yeah, so it's being held up, so. That's kind of where we're at with this.
Well, I don't see any problem with it, 'cause I can't imagine, they can see the terrible building down, that they were given wrong information to begin with.
And I said, that's one of the things, we made a big deal about surveying, and a lot of people have been really upset about it lately, but this is why.
But if they rebuild, if they have to do the new.
Whatever the warning is for that day, so.
So the perfect example is Crystal's house, it's not, Crystal, when her house burned down, she came and got another variance to build it where it already was. You guys should have denied that, yeah, you guys could have denied that and made her build it to the current specs, or you had the option of granting her the variance. Well, I make a motion that we grant the variance with the understanding that whoever buys it knows if something happens, the town reclaims it too, and a half feet over the zoning laws. It's actually spelled out pretty clearly now, and it's.
Okay, motion made, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, any other council discussion? Very none, all favor I?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is law line adjustment request from Alan Lamb. The information in front of you there, uh, for the map, Alan's here tonight. Will I have to speak for a minute for you and tell you what he wants to do?
So, um, I own the Hot Springs R V. right down here, and we wanna, we're taking everybody out of it. The lots are in the direction of this way, from the alley to here.
Now.
Okay, in the first hour, sorry, thank you. So, what we wanna do, if these cows exist, or the L exists here, we, they're in this direction. We have a hot water well right here.
Excuse me, can you stand on the other side of the counter, we can see you're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a reflection, so, I'm gonna stand over here. Okay, so everybody can see?
Go ahead, Alan.
Okay. Over here is a hot water well. I've been to the Flathead, um, Waterport, and they allocated us to create an area through here as an easement to supply, um, the hot water into private tubs. And I've given an example of what tubs would be, 'cause Randy asked me how many gallons, and in that, I don't know if you got a copy of that, but I have it with me. So, anyway, um, these lots could have spent, um, city water and city sewage to each one of these. Right now, um, I have the drawings in there from years ago, it was all put in one system. And at that time, state approved and everything, which has been a bit of a problem, because you never know what people are gonna drop into it, so. We're just cleaning up the whole property, this area be filled, these are locations of flood plain, and this is Carson surveying, which has already been done in the four corners. So Carson would turn it, the lots would be turned this way, this would be a common, what they call a common. And this would all be filled. A French drain is engineered across here, would pick up a French drain from here, 'cause there's water problems, 'cause many years ago, this guy dug for a pool here, the old Indian that had the land, so put it all in the flood plain. Uh, one foot of fill will make that go away, makes sense. They've already done a drone overload, so it's within, you know, accuracy of a quarter inch or less, so. Anyway, we've got, we're gonna put a fence up along this side, eight foot along the Bell side, the Bell brothers live here, for privacy. And then there would be, of course, these are all city, oop, we, uh, follow the city rules, six foot along here. Here, um, power is being looked at by Mission Valley Power. We would take out the power that's existing there, take out the sewer, take out the water. City water and city sewage would be put in here, which would be beneficial to the city at whatever rate each one of these would be. Six thousand dollars for each one of those hookups. So they would be independent five of us. So, um, we were just wanting to know, with this lot size, number one, how many square feet could we put there? We're roughly thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred square feet would be the maximum. So, the lot size, according to what we could understand, I've been told, and I'm not sure about this, so, um, that we could use up to fifty percent of the lot, which we're not even gonna get near. But sixty percent says something in the minutes, like on the corner ones, and fifty for these, but we're looking at way less than that, so. Right in here, we would like to know like how many feet we need for parking. As you see, the person that was there, we'd like to know like how many feet back setbacks are for all that. What all the setback regulations are. what all the setback regulations are. And like I said, we want to bring an independent sewage to each one. And so, if there's any questions, I guess.
So where are the lot tubs that are drained?
Into the city sewer, just like all the other places that have hot tubs, Alameda's or anything.
Isn't more like a bathtub?
Um, yeah. What they are is... These, they're cold soaked on one side, because that's, they're, what they call it?
Pudge it there.
Yeah, not for a person, city. These are made by some brothers that have refined these, so they have filters in them. You know, so these, right now, the well that's developed has a spin filter in it to take any debris out of it. And it's producing about 28 gallons a minute of hot water. So we would just fill these, and that would be, be monitored, fill them, drain them, fill them, drain them. As, you know, when they become, yeah, because they have filters in them, they have ozone, resonators, so we're looking to build something really clean. And we're trying to, we're gonna put a bathroom, a shower in, door, that would lead to these handicap accessible buildings.
And there's one of those at each place?
That's what we're shooting for something, that would be maximum.
What is the reason for the lot leave? I guess my question is, if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, are ordinance allows you to put four tiny houses on a 10,000 square foot lot? Regardless of where your property lines on there, it remains one lot. So what is the purpose of changing and changing the lot lines and making them smaller?
It, it actually is something that the water board requested to do independent, to make it independent as a shared well, because they're gonna put a meter on it. That, you know, they, Flathead wants to start putting meters on all the wells. The way they explained it, the hot water well, and all the wells, they want to get to a point where they can put meters on them just to regulate them.
Right, but what, what does that have to do with the lot lines?
Because the lots are gonna have individual structures on them, where they have individual hookups. Because I have an investor from Hawaii who wants to buy one or two, so that I could finance this whole project. So, because it's, there's a lot of money involved. Is there spill involved? There's lots of things.
So your intention is to sell the lots individually?
This one, possibly this one.
So that corner lot, if there's a 15-foot setback up of each of the street, if you go 15 feet off that one side, you only have, and five feet off the other, you essentially only have like six feet wide building.
Is that commercial, or?
That's for any building.
Now, you're confused now, but if you're building a commercial building there, it's commercial.
Okay.
If it's a residential, it's residential setback. So, commercial is for a commercial structure, build a hotel, a restaurant, you know, that's commercial. You can't say a residential house is commercial.
Well, it wouldn't be residential, it'd be more, you know. But I don't think 15 feet is a problem, we're not gonna cram it up that close anyway. These things are only be like 14 foot wide.
Right, but if you have a 25-foot lot, and you have to be 15 feet off your property line, you, and five feet off the other side, you only have-
You have to be 15 feet from this property line?
Yes, yes.
And that is-
The ordinance.
The ordinance for-
15 feet off the street, for residential, you have to be 15 feet off-
And this wouldn't be declared, you know, in commercial?
Some guy's gonna buy it, it's gonna be his own, and it's not gonna be a business, so it's gonna be a residence. Which makes it a residence.
Well, if he bought these two lots, you're saying he'd have to push back 15 feet?
Yes. But if you divide it into a 25-foot lot, and you only have one lot, you wouldn't be able to build them?
Alternative to this, okay, is this could be taken away, because these aren't set in stone. This line could be taken away. He could follow those rules.
Yeah.
This one, if these are home, then they could just stay that way, correct?
Well, I mean, they still don't meet the requirements for the ordinance, that's still up to the council.
Oh.
The ordinance requires lots to be 7,000 square feet.
What's this for the bath, or are you just talking about a bath house?
Not a bath house, it's their soaking, you know, soaking tubs hooked to the structure.
So around the, so you were gonna have the lot and then a tiny house?
Like timber, a timber frame unit, you know, roughly 14 feet wide, but just a shower and a sink.
Around each, each of those tubs?
And then a door in the back that would go to the soak tub, which would be kind of an enclosed area.
So around each tub?
And those would be here, you know, the structure that's set here, 14 feet wide, so roughly 14 feet.
So I think what you're asking, is it attached to the, to the sleeping unit?
No.
No, so it's a separate?
Kind of separate, yeah.
Okay. So are these, drain, the tubs themselves, a fill and drain?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not like a hot tub where it recirculates?
Well, they're hot tubs, you know, but they, the hot tubs, you fill and drain.
So for example, if you go to Alameda's, you fill the tub, get in it, when you leave, it drains?
That's for a bathroom.
The hot tub in my house stays full all the time.
That's what I'm saying, you, when you change it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you change it, whatever needs change.
Okay.
That's what this is, it's a filter system. It has an ozone, it has a filter, it's a hot tub. What keeps the water warm? Pardon me? What keeps the water warm? It has a heater in it, so the temperature comes out of the well. Right now, that's one of the questions that the Flathead Waterboard wanted to know. It's almost a hot tub temperature. So, the graph, of course, is very short term to heat it. Like, once it gets to a certain temperature, it only takes like an hour to change 10 degrees. If you're, if the water comes in at 90 degrees and you need it 104, it only takes literally about an hour to heat that from that. And that side, I believe, has 285 gallons on the hot water side. The cold water side is 165, because a lot of people need the cold water, or want the cold water. They want to plunge in the cold water. So it has an actual cooling unit in it, built into it. So that water stays cool, but it'll be the mineral water. They thought, you know, the, yeah.
So the water for both sides, the cool and the hot, comes from the same place, that same well?
From the well.
And you just cool it on one side?
Yes, sir, and the well is 298 feet deep, pristine. They sent a camera down in it, the well's really beautiful shape. And so, they were all like, which I was like, if I could get past there, then I'd just go to the city and find out, are we into this? Because we want to just help build people. That's what my dream was when I came here. And then it turned into like an RV park, and, well, that's been kind of a while.
What's that, the end piece for this, so the L?
This one, okay, so the reason why we established this, is every, I gotta make sure everybody sees. So the reason why this was established this way, the Flathead Waterboard and the other, we need an easement through here for the water. So it comes through on a manifold system, comes in and manifolds to each one of these tubs.
Maybe there'll be the common area back there.
Yeah, this is called the common area, back here. And back here, we're gonna put up a gazebo for people to gather, you know, a little private area for family to sit. And just make a nice place for a family to be underneath, like, I do log or the timber frame, so. A lot of this is gonna be log and timber.
I have a question, so as far as the 15-foot setback, that's from the front, from the front of the property, correct?
Side, she said.
It's 15 off the street.
So it's a whole street regardless whether it's a side yard or a front?
So, that 15-
Any five on the other?
On the L?
On the alley side or the other side?
And side yards.
Pardon, yeah, from the alley side too?
Alley and side yards.
The corner lot, you have two sides.
And is that 15 feet from the owner's fence lines?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, okay. So, the other thing we needed to, I forgot to ask, is there's an existing culvert in here, Randy's already said they're gonna open that up, because it, it's real, we want to make sure that the land, we had a bad flood this year, it came in here, we want to make sure away, because Travis Phelps is my son-in-law, he does a lot of stuff. So we would probably have Travis come in here and shoot all this, and put a French drain in, we'd talk with them, talk to Bells, and just take their water off, it would join there and go into culvert, which is about in here, isn't it, Randy? Somewhere, somewhere about it, somewhere about there. So, in this area here, where it's orange, purple dots, that area would be filled, all the way back.
So doesn't that, the eight fence in the back have to require a variance as well?
And do you think that number 6 feet requires entry?
I think it's a-
I just didn't see it listed on here anywhere.
Yeah, well, no, we, first of all, this hasn't, this hasn't been done, none of this has been done.
Right.
Great, so.
So I guess one of the questions on your L piece, could you flop that over to make it on the street side? That way then, you don't have to worry about setbacks?
Put the L over on the first half there.
Where we-
I was gonna talk to you about it, flip the L around.
Because you're not gonna do anything on it, then it doesn't matter.
Squeeze the lots to the alley. Squeeze lots all the way to the alley, and then on the front open.
Instead of right here being your L, put your L over here, I don't know if you can see that up there?
Because you're not gonna do anything on a piece of property, you must put up your own stuff to set backs.
I see, that's good.
Yeah, you put this and- The well is on that side.
Yeah, yep.
We're not talking about the offshoot for the whole- You're just gonna take lot one and move it to the alley.
This here?
Yeah, move it to the alley.
Yeah, with 13 on my next to 10.
So you keep 13, and then take, there, I'll show you.
Oh, I see, just take this and make L go the other direction?
Yeah, and does that L have to be that wide, I guess that? Couldn't it be smaller, so then the lots could be a little bit bigger? What's the-
We're not really building anything big, this is 75 feet.
Well, I know, it's to help you meet more of the variant, or the zoning.
Yeah, well, the easement that comes through here, they wanted that area, you know, to be able to be serviceable with equipment. So it is a little bit required, but-
So they need 26 feet?
There's already drainage just right there also, is that why?
Yeah, yeah.
The white dock.
We just wanted to make this kind of like an area for people to just sit in.
These are already part of the drainage system, so they need to be on that property.
So if you have to have 15 feet for parking?
Well, that all, that all is just, is, is cabins are getting built are about the same size that trailer's sitting there. So your off-street parking works.
But we're shoving it, you see where the trailers are? It would actually probably be further back, we just, because, what I, what I was asking is, I guess, is how many feet of parking?
We have that 15-foot setback that gives you your parking.
So 15 foot?
Your 15 feet off the street, because that's what gives you your parking, that's why it's there.
Did you get that? Because that was one.
So that is, yeah.
So like where those cars are parked, I mean, that, that's, that fits, that's where they're supposed to be.
And Randy, is the water and sewer available out here, is what Mike said. So, if we hooked up, you know, I was, the reason why I divided that, like, to, trying to get more income on a test for the city, and if we can get structures in there, that would give five hookups of each.
Okay, I've got some questions. So you have a guy who wants to buy two of the lots, is he going to utilize those lots himself? Or is he planning to rent them out?
He wants them for his, his own thing, for-
His own family?
His own family, he's got a daughter, and he lives in Hawaii, Robert Campbell, a lot of people know him.
Right, but, see, Alameda's put in those hot tubs by their fence on, if that's Bay Street?
Bay Street.
Yeah, and then, they're, they're a fill and drain situation, even though their well is down right now, they have to discharge those, and then EPA gets involved with the discharge, if it's commercial use. In other words, if they're rented out by the night, and they're filled, and then drained at the end of each customer, then the EPA gets involved with the discharged water.
Yeah, I mean, that's, one of the questions that the water board asked us, was, is this water gonna go on the ground? We said, no, we would be talking to the city, because, you know, I know there's probably, I don't know what kind of fee everybody pays to dump their things, there's other places here in town that are sort of places. I have no idea if there's a fee, if it's risen, or if it's a little more than the normal sewage that we dump. But this would be no, no different than a house on each one, I don't think, because a lot of people are gonna be staying, like Robert does, coming to Hopper and stuff, so I don't see it being 285 gallons plus a cold, so, I mean, I don't know, it, yes, the answer to the question is yes, could go into the city sewer if we were allowed to do this.
So, so Randy, so if he's kept it the way it was, and he got rid of that middle lines to deal with the setback, could then he still build two tiny houses on it? If it wasn't two lots anymore?
I could do like four or something, right?
Well, I, yeah, you suggested four, I mean, you could only do four each way.
No, I mean, if he just got rid of this one line, so this became one lot?
No, he still wouldn't have room with setbacks.
I, what?
He still wouldn't have a wide enough space to put two houses, that's the problem, there's only, he still has to-
Right.
Hand it over, so. So it'd still just be one?
Well, that's why, yeah, so it only, no, the question was, the suggestion was to take out this lot, this line, and just make it one big lot, and so, but can you still do two lot, I think still do four?
That's, that was my question. Still have to be 15 feet over, it's, takes up, yeah, you have to have 10,000 square-
So even if he got rid of that middle line, we're still, okay.
So, nothing set in stone, one of the options could be elimination of one of the lot, lot lines here. And this could create, but since I was thinking beneficial for the town, you know, thinking, I want to, I've always, you know, tried to be a part of this town and been making things happen. We just thought if they had their independent water and their independent sewage, then that would be great, and then the lots. The reason why the Flathead Waterboard wanted to see it this way, was if I should die, or if this thing goes in, they wanted to be able to see that it was a, you know what they say? Like, just be able to sell it independently.
Correct.
He said, I, I want to see this, that's the first thing Ethan said, I want to see it as if you passed away or something, somebody would, you know, would be able to put a tiny house there, or, you know, be able to have that water right. Because they're gonna issue five water rights to this happens, five water rights.
Off of one well?
Yeah, it's called a shared well use. We've got paperwork with us, and he said, the moment we get everything okay with you guys, this is a process that we have to go through. And Randy said, don't be spending a bunch of money, which he's smart, don't be spending much money until you find out when you can do it, you know? Because I don't know the rules completely, I don't understand the rules, because Travis was telling me, he thought it could be built right up to the line, because it's, I said, you have variance and all this, and I said, I don't, and so, and I don't even want to build them that big, so, I'm not gonna build like this. Everything's gonna be sweet and simple, keep it simple thing, you know? That's the way I want to do this, you know? It, it's just a place where people can come, park their car, and go in and do a hypotherapy thing, so. Where they can come to Hot Springs, Montana. And that's what it's gonna be, the name of this, if it happens, is gonna be, where living waters flow, Hot Springs, Montana.
So they could be individual, owned individually by-
They could be, eventually, if something happens to me, you know what I'm saying?
So you're, what, keeping the land and selling the house, or?
No, I'm, it's gonna be owned by me, this one would be sold to my, this goes the way it's, right? If they sold it to my friend, that would finance this project.
Okay, but then the other two would be-
The three, that's the way it looks here.
The other three, you would own?
I would control the water right, which they wanted at the border, they want to be, they have, this is why they formed this lot, being an L, this is called common area, is what they quoted it. So it comes across here- This is called common area, is what they quoted it, so it comes across here, this can be maintained. The reason why it was crucial to do that is because if each, if one person has a problem with their water, they don't, you know, there has to be a to-go-to person, a go-to well. If something happens, if the pump's down, and the pump, because, you know, this is an architected well, but it's different. This well, I have no idea, many years I sat on this well, the old Indian that owned it, I have no idea of its potential, I thought it was a hundred feet deep, it's two hundred and ninety-eight feet deep. It's been sleeping over there, and when we did a drawdown test, I was like, what? Well, all this water that's on top of it was keeping the real architected flow is down here, so here this well is sleeping. And it's, if you put a pump on it, that's how many gallons a minute that it'll flow, and it's registered right now at twenty-eight to twenty-nine dollars, I think, I believe it is. So the well log was done, a drawdown test, that well log went before the board, and they checked temperatures, they sat, and it was about a two and a half hour meeting. And there, they said, we'd like to see this.
Well, I think that I'm really asking it, the, the two lots on the corner you sell to a friend and he owns those, those would be residential lots. And the three lots are owned by you.
Yes.
Four.
That's the goal.
Three.
Well, that's three.
Three. Three, okay, so he's only really buying one?
Two.
Two.
There's five lots in that picture, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and thirteen.
All, all we're doing is spinning them, they work this way, horizontal, and all we're doing is, and then, and then lots happen all the time. Like Carson said, I could come with you, but they know you spend their money, so you, you know, spend, do you see the, the board where the lots are?
So you're not just spinning them though, because they're a hundred and forty-foot lot, so you're spinning them and then shorting them.
And making a common area, yeah.
About sixty-five feet off of each one, so.
So it's two thousand, about two thousand square.
Thirty-five hundred square feet down to eighteen hundred and seventy-five square feet.
Well, anyway, I would like to finish my question. So if the other three lots are owned by you, are you renting them out?
Um, I, I won't, I won't be just letting people stay there for free.
Well, I understand, that becomes commercial.
But this is residential commercial, so I don't understand, because I don't know what Robert essentially, like, Robert, if he's gonna buy the lots, if he's gonna let people, like, he's got condo in Whitefish that we've developed, and they, you know, he prints the two top sections out, that's on the first homepage. I mean, I don't know where he's gonna go with the full design, he has, the questions that we have tonight are, is this possible? How many square feet can we build on them? Because I know there's other places in town that have to build lots, we don't wanna necessarily build, we wanna obey the rules, but what can I do with my land? That's what I'm here for tonight, what can I do with my land? I mean, I've got permission from the Water Board for the use of the hot water.
Well, commercial, residential, it's gotta either be commercial or residential, you can't have one, yeah, can't make it, part of it be commercial.
I don't think anybody's gonna intend to live there permanently, nobody's intending there to live permanently.
But you were, what I, what I'm confused about is that those last sectors, your friend's gonna buy the first two lots, and he'll own them, you're gonna keep.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Well, can I finish this? So you're gonna keep the other two lots, but build, well, the big one that I'm talking about, the two little ones, and we're gonna build tiny houses on them and rent them, so that becomes a commercial endeavor. That's, it's, the other ones are, if he's gonna live in it and resident, so it's, you're trying to make it both.
Well, I don't know, it's residential, commercial, that's what I'm here to find out, it's residential, commercial, so those are.
It's one or the other. It means, a residential, commercial means you could do, you could build a commercial thing there, or you could make a resident there, but you can't do resident and commercial together.
One or the other.
It's one or the other.
So if we look at it all commercial, what could he do?
Well, then I think the setbacks change a little bit and stuff, right Randy?
So if it becomes commercial, we can build right up to the lot points?
No.
He still has some setbacks, but it's a little better.
A little better.
But your buildings all have pretty commercial building standards and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe that would be a good route to go.
So if you've got a mixed use, it'd be wise to go commercial rather than residential. But then you're gonna have to deal with the discharge of your water, check with the EPA and all of that, and I guess it then becomes, you would rent them out because you're not. And I don't know if you're gonna keep the land and just own the buildings, and it's just.
No, it's nothing like that, I mean, we're not gonna keep the land and own just the buildings, that's more like a common area or whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, they would own the building, you would keep the land.
No, that's, that's not, that, I think there's one place in our town that has, does something like that.
Yeah, that's Alameda's.
Oh, yeah, but there's another one alongside.
Yeah, with all the lot cabins.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Other condos.
Yeah.
Condos, I don't wanna do a condo, I, no, that's not my angle.
Okay, well, that, that would kinda clear it up, because you'd need to go commercial.
Well, we could go commercial, I don't think Robert would have a problem with that, you know? Cause I'll need it back for commercial.
Though, that would limit from Robert's daughter moving to Hot Springs and living in a tiny house on that property.
He doesn't wanna come here to live.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I would eliminate seven lot ten to Scott to live there permanently, you wouldn't be able to do that.
So it'd be a building that would be a tiny house that we could rent out. That's probably what would be best, anyway, to do a commercial.
Even though these are all separate lots in this, on this one parcel, each individual lot can't be its own, you can't choose residential or commercial?
By all, you gotta choose where you're gonna be, so.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Someone buys lot ten, and they put a tiny house on it, that's their residence.
The way we had back home.
But that, does that just apply to lot ten, without lot eleven, lot twelve?
Well, cause I mean, it'll watch now.
To decide what it is?
The problem is right now the lots go the other way and they're significantly larger, they're thirty-five hundred square feet. If you're gonna ask the town to allow you to make the lots smaller and turn your lots the other way, we'd like to know what you're doing on them before we say, yeah, go ahead. Because we don't wanna say, you know, we're gonna turn the, the lots, we're gonna make them only eighteen hundred square feet, and then you just go build houses and, and sell them to people to live in with their five kids.
No, that's.
So that's why, that's why the town needs to know what your plan is, because they can tell you that we're happy with what you're doing.
So what, in essence, what you're gonna do is you're gonna build a tiny house here with a soaking tub in the back, and you're gonna rent it out every day.
Basically.
They're gonna come, they're gonna rent it, just a day, two days, maybe a week.
Yep.
And then they leave, so it's, they're gonna be Airbnb's with a soaking tub in the back.
Yeah, so, back where I'm from, that, what she was saying was, back where I'm from, you, you, people had a res- residential, commercial, because I ran my business, I, we had a house on the property, but we ran a commercial business. That was a split, was residential, commercial, kind of a grandfather clause back home, it's like you could live there, a house and run your business.
If you have a commercial business and you have an attached building that supports the commercial business, you can have a residence on a commercial property, but it has to support the commercial business.
Like maybe a caretaker house?
Something like that, yeah, I think Sophia Springs, they have a caretaker house there, they are a commercial property, it's a commercial business, they live in that house because it supports the business. So all zoned, commercial, the residence is there because it supports the business, and that's actually in the ordinance as well.
Here's the problem with what you're doing, I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen, I'm gonna look into my crystal ball. You're gonna put all them there, you're gonna sell them to people, someone's gonna come to lot twelve, they're gonna wanna build a bigger building there, or put a garage in or something like that. And the town has to tell them no, because that's covered towards the lot, or the setbacks and all that. That's kinda what ends up happening down the road for the town, that's where we start getting involved more and more, it makes more hassle for us. Because we let you do this with a dream, and ten years from now, it's a different dream. You know, we know that life changes in ten years and things change, and that's, that's, we gotta, we always, the town has to look in the future, twenty years at least, when we do some of these things. Because you look at it today, it's great, I can go over and show you some property that was great, they divided up, did this exact same thing. Someone forgot where the water and sewer went, now the water and sewer goes across someone else's land, and then the owner will let them service it. Now the house doesn't have water and sewer anymore.
That's why we have to make that independent.
And that's why we always gotta be thinking, I just use that as an example, these all have access, but, but those are some of those things. Or down here, we allow a lady to put in, you know, a couple trailers, the next thing you know, there's four trailers on two little lots, and it's almost a hundred percent covered, the lots are almost a hundred percent covered with trailers. You know, and then you try and stop her, it became a big fight, because, you know, and that's what we, what you wanna do here is great, until the family of five wants to move into one little tiny house, and starts having a lot and doing this and that.
Well, but, that's why we're here, is trying to figure out how many square feet left, and the question.
Right, I mean, for what you're doing now is what you're talking about, is buying great, it's just down the road, we gotta be looking at what's gonna happen ten years from now with these, with this property, so.
Yeah.
Actually, I mean, since you're not really convinced, I mean, you're just now talking about the commercial, you don't really have a plan set.
We have to get, find out.
I don't feel really comfortable with, you know, talking, or maybe voting on anything yet, until you actually know what is it you're planning to do with it.
Well, we kinda have to know before we spend any more money or time, whether or not this is even feasible or possible, you know?
What is okay?
What is okay, what, do we leave it all as one, sell it back to the tribe, cause they're interested in that well? But I'm not here, I'm trying to do something with this, for this town. I mean, well, that's what I'm here for, get what, I mean, I don't know, just trying to figure it out.
I guess we're a little confused, are you telling everyone Turbo in town here is a commercial property?
It's not, it's a.
Yeah, we just don't have.
So like the one next door to me where it's in front of the residence, I'm gonna say the property, that's a commercial residential lot?
It's not, it's a commercial, you know, and that's where the, and then, that's kinda where a lot of towns are coming into some trouble. And a little bit of reading on it, but that question's been brought up a lot, all over the nation.
I actually brought that up to Jim Artest, and there's a lot of them that are into residential, maybe residential.
Because they're, they're, they're regular, it's, I mean, all, all towns have it, Plains, I've been reading some stuff that's going on, or the mayor's list, or the different people bringing up things, hey, this is what on, you know, Airbnb's are becoming everywhere. And is that actually commercial, or is it just a short-term rental, whatever, the renting it out by the month, this is a short-term, you know, so that's what is it? And that's some of that, twenty-five years ago, no one thought about this, so now, now we're trying to make new rules or new stuff. And the other thing with Airbnb's, a hotel has to be inspected by health inspection, it all pays everything, it's got criteria, Airbnb's don't, they're trying to, now a lot of cities and towns are bringing that in too, is they have to be health code, you know, and they have to meet all the specifications. And that's different towns or ahead of other towns, we're way behind on that.
I guess the other thing, I can see confidence, if somebody builds something that they wanna live in, and then the person next door decides they're gonna sell, rent it out every night, and so then you've got conflict with the neighbors, because there's not that much space between the, the buildings.
Well, it's commercial, you can go real near the lot lines, it turns commercial, because that's what it basically is, I'm just confused, because where I'm from, when you explained it, where I'm from, we lived in an house that was all commercial, these properties, it's all commercial, residential.
You're just, you can get this dual purpose.
Yeah, 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 but to be back home.
So you're in Montana now, where you have Washington.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, where I'm from, that, that's why I'm confused, because I ran Marilla Law Homes for years, and we each lived in a property.
Well, but also there was, in, in Osprey, there was grandfather did businesses, some residential air businesses, zoning payment later.
So technically, right now, Alan has six and a half lots, six lots, six twenty-five foot lots, individually platted, twenty-five by one forty lots. If he wanted to go put six tiny homes, one on each lot, because they're individual lots, he can do that.
No.
Yeah, it's only five.
Oh, I counted wrong then.
There, there were five original, there's still five.
Okay, so.
So you can do one.
So the way that they sit right now, technically, because of the way that it's titled through the county, I looked at, I did a lot of research on your stuff. So the way that it's titled through the county, and the way that they're individually planted, all, everything at twenty-five foot lots, he can technically put one house on each lot. He has to meet all the setback requirements, but technically he can do that.
Don't we have a minimum of seven thousand square?
But his is a existing lot.
Well, it takes two of them to make a building lot, isn't that?
Not if they're already planted that way through the county.
Well, they've already, they're planted like that all over town.
Right, so what we did, the seven thousand square foot though, so when people are doing what he's doing, they had to meet the seven thousand. But these lots are already planted twenty-five feet, it is what it is.
And this is just a maintenance spin. The reason why I did that is because there's a ditch on one side, and there's an alley on the other, to make it real nice, you know, if you'd want, have your water and sewage hooked right up, it's got a screen light, line it like it is now, I've got a picture. And it, this was okay, I was the only person that ran everything through the state when I got here, you know, thinking I wanna do everything legal, it probably would not fly now, but this is the copy they gave me from the state, this is what we got now. And it's, and so all of this would be abandoned, the water and everything would be abandoned, because they allowed us to do that back then, you know? And now, we wanna make it easier for the city to be able to come out through their meter, and put the straight up, straight in, straight into the Harvee Street North. So it's kind of up to you guys, I guess, to tell us what we can and can't do with the lot, lots, I mean, do we need to sell the whole thing as a unit and put four buildings on it? Cause that would legally, or do we just put a fence around it, utilize the hot water and bring people to Hot Springs, Montana, so?
Yeah, cause right now, you don't have to do anything, you can put four tiny houses on it.
Yeah, so.
And, and actually, for, for a, looking forward from the town's perspective, that actually will be less trouble for the town down the road, because it's one unit, it's one, so you can't be selling off individuals, it is what it is. This, you could essentially have five different owners.
And it doesn't even have to be, it doesn't have to be server rated or anything, just bring it in and do it.
Right, and then like now, with what you're proposing here though, is ten years down the road, you could actually have five different ownerships. Or if you left it like that, or you made, took out the lot lines and made it one piece of property, put in four tiny houses, and that always be just one piece of property, you always have one over. And then, then you could have your.
I could basically say, yeah, do it.
I saw it, I mean, it's not a deed though, that's, that's, it's a, it's a, these four people, I mean.
Yeah, well, over at the Simes, we have six cabins on the west side, and we, they are all on the same piece of property, and there's six of them with probably ten feet in between each one. And they're all on, they're on the same property as the hotel, it's all commercial. And, and they have city water and sewer going to them, and then, but they don't have any mineral water, they have to come inside the building, the hotel itself for city water. But we have one Jacuzzi suite, it has a four-person jetted spa in there, and we have to fill and drain every time we have a customer come in there, because you can't sanitize that tub in between customers. That's all I'm saying, and that's the same thing that Alameda's ran into also with their hot tubs. And that's the same thing that Alameda's ran into also with their hot tubs along the fence. And they have discharged their water into an irrigation ditch or something else.
I wonder, I wonder how many of these people are running it or a filter before it needs water? Cause mine already is. It's designed. It's computerized, it's a science system. You look down that well, I spent $40,000 on that well. And it spins through a spin filter, drops all the debris, comes out the other side, clears, can be.
Oh, I, I believe that you've put money into this already. And I want you to be successful. The more water facilities that we have open, the name of the town is Hot Springs. We want the public to be able to use it. I just don't want you to see a roadblock come up.
I'm trying here.
In the middle of that.
That's what I'm here for because I'm not gonna be dumping much more energy in before I figure out like, well, what can I do? This is what, this is what I wanted to do. Zoning it or doing it on a commercial basis, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, it just, it gives you a little more advantage as far as lot lines go and everything. And that way, if you're keeping a couple of those lots and you're gonna run them out, then you are in compliance with the zoning.
So I just hear is the Simes has a discharge permit in the creek. It doesn't?
Absolutely, we do.
Right, yes, I know that.
And that EPA is a pain.
Yeah, and you don't discharge into our sewer. Alameda's, they don't discharge into our sewer, do they?
Who?
Does Alameda's?
The.
Yeah, so nobody disch.
Sophia Springs?
No, they have discharge permits.
Where does Sophia dump their?
Sophia's just down the road.
So everybody's dumping the water into irrigation?
You have to have EPA permits, discharge permits and dump them into the system. Because you're gonna be dumping thousands of gallons of water into our sewer system.
So you're saying that if we got permission from the EPA to take that water somehow through the cupboard into hot springs? Shritting? You know, that's the closest thing.
That's where mine goes. It goes over a little waterfall. It goes into the ditch that goes into Hot Springs Creek. And that's why I have a license to discharge water through the EPA.
So now.
Or if you discharge that water, what the town would do is on the sewer side, there would just be enough charge. You already spoke of it, you know, when we were talking there. The sewer charges would be a little more if you're dumping it in the city sewer. These other guys are dumping it in. And then you don't have to have a discharge permit if you dump it in the city sewer.
Can we do that?
Yeah, that's, that's doable.
And I pay a lot more water and sewer than a normal household.
Well, we, you know, I, I just want to go, I want compliance. I want to do this right. We're just asking for permission to do it. We can do it on a commercial level. I got confused by the commercial, that's what it is. Commercial's more, I'm not really, they're noticeable, they're, Robert didn't attend to them. So he lives in Hawaii and has a place to live.
Yeah, I, you know, the creek is up on Wall Street. Well, my ditch is in front of the hotel and goes in where that bridge is up past Peter's old house. But we might be able to tie in somewhere.
Oh, he's right, the ditch is right, the creek is right by the street.
Yeah, but if Randy says, you know, pay a little more to dump it into the city sewer.
Then he just has to worry about discharge permit and do all that.
So those other two lots, you would build the tiny homes before you sold them?
Nothing's gonna be sold. Robert, Robert wants to buy, I mean, sold, yeah.
But, but William, okay, but those two lots you're not selling?
No, that's the plan. But the infrastructure has to be all put in before anything happens. We're talking three months out.
So then you're renting those tiny homes out of the other two lots?
And that's what he said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, earlier you said you were selling, selling the tiny homes. So that's why I'm confused.
No, I'm not selling the tiny.
Well, the zone, I said, yeah, that lot, was it commercial before, was it trailer park?
Oh, it said the commercial residential was commercial. And before that, it actually had an apartment complex lot, so it was there. That burned down 30 years ago, whatever it was.
When I got here, there was one resident who was a tribal guy.
Yeah.
He's the one who drilled it.
Roland Anderson filled it with costello, which was a tribal well drilling out.
Yeah, yes, it was.
Roland was tribal?
Yeah.
Yes.
I let him stay there until he passed away. That was, I bought the property and said you could stay until you pass away, right?
And I saw the well drilling rig on that lot. And I called the tribe and said, there's someone drilling a well on that lot. And they said, go down and tell us who the well driller is. And it was a tribal driller.
Yeah, so it's kind of grandfathered in and way that way because it is a tribal well. And but I went, that's why I went before.
My grits are starting to get burnt here again.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, wherever it is, the dead horse has been kicked across the floor.
Yeah, it's usually, I'm too.
You know, I just, I'm, I'm a tutea. I'd like to know a little more information. If you could hone in your plan a little bit and come back, we'd be happy to say yes, you know? It's just a little bit confusing for us.
So your biggest concern realistically is the selling lots separately? That would be a no, I mean, like the first two lots?
Well, they wanted to see, if that's not possible, I gotta back out of this. Because the water board wants this to be a shared well right on it. Before they issue the right for, they said they would, they are willing to issue the right for this. To be used just as I want. But it has to be done this way to have an easement for the water to be worked on. I mean, they know what they're doing too, the water.
Question, um, so it sounds like the concern, but it sounds like the concern is with it, if it's zoned as commercial. What's keeping, you know, something happen and they sell it as residential and then people come in and that's now what's going to manifest. How do you normally handle that on a commercial residential? Can you put a, do you have restriction on it or do you keep simply selling it?
Yeah, you could probably put a restriction on it.
Our realtors tried to do that.
We, we tried to do it and just have people just try to do it.
Why don't you turn it into commercial? If it's commercial residential, why don't you just switch zone?
You could ask us to do that.
Yeah, you could ask. But initially Alan came here to find out how big of a building you can put on each lot. So that's a simple question. If he, if he has these lots and they are the size they are. And we keep them the, he keeps them the same size that they are.
So he could put a 16-foot wide building on each lot? It could be, uh, just off the top of my head, cause you gotta do the math on it. But it could be 30 feet long, 40 feet long?
Yeah.
It could be a long building. Actually, you gotta, you can only cover so much of the property and you only do it and that.
Right. It's, is it 50% brandy?
Yeah, I believe that is.
But we're not even in a good.
Right, so, so I mean, you know, so.
That's what I dread.
I mean, it'd be a pretty good sized house, 16-foot wide by 40 feet long probably. Or it's starting to be too big.
Can we define that in the variance request? So we have something to?
Well, that's his, that's his, I mean, that's.
It's a, it's a order. It's 60% for corner lots and 50% for, right, they'll rent them. It's in the, it's in the.
There's setbacks or setbacks.
In the, what do you call it? City ordinance.
Yeah, so they're still bringing in off the street so far for.
It is, the setbacks all still a block. So you have five feet, five feet, five feet, five feet. So there's 10 feet of each lot you can't use. So you build in the middle 16-foot wide.
Okay.
And since it's.
So that's already all of, all the zoning's over, that's already on place.
And since it's commercial, I would have, I have a licensed architectural engineer already waiting to design. So that nobody has any, we have everything engineered.
So what he's doing is what he really needs, what he's asking you to do tonight is take his five lots that are running this way.
Yes.
And be able to spin and top is what you have to approve.
Well, I mean, I think it's possible, you know? And, and from my point of view, as another hot water owner. I would just like you to contact the EPA and see if two of these have filling drains or if all four of them have filling drains, are you gonna be able to discharge? Yeah.
Well, I would have to find out too from Randy in the city if I can discharge into the sewage.
Well, he said he could if you paid more. Is that gonna be in writing?
Well, it gets out of bar. I mean, that's, we do that with any.
We haven't got that.
That's something we do all the time, so.
Yeah.
So you're gonna divide it into lots, but you're gonna maintain ownership of all of it except for the two lots that your friend has?
That's the next one.
Okay.
But if I passed away somehow, you know, or something, they want, the water board wanted to see it as five lots.
Essentially, you're not granting him permission to sell it to his friend. You're not doing any of that. All you're saying is you can take your land, you can turn it, you can do this. And you can never, ever look at it ever again if you don't ever want to.
That's it, that's, you want to see it in the town or not?
Well, without talking about what you can build on it, so it was just looking.
Well, I think it's clarified that, should we make a motion?
Well, all you can make a motion on tonight is lot line adjustment. Tell them, that's all you can do. You can let him do this. That's all you can approve tonight because that's all that's on the agenda.
And then he'll have to come back with all.
He has to come back if you want something else.
What do you think?
It's fine. You can come back with your commercial setbacks or the dry, uh, what you're doing on each lot next time they come to the council.
And add your fence on there too, Alan, so you get everything in one shot. Your eight-foot, right?
Yeah, well, um, I think that I just need to know if I'm reading things wrong. Because my son-in-law went through this with me and the, um, the Carsons. And he said, you should be able, because they both read the thing. They understood it as 50% of the lot could be used, which would be like Randy's supplement of vicinity, what you're talking about. Which is like bigger than what we are.
So Alan, your request for on the agenda was just the lot lines. So they cannot tell you or give you permission or say it's okay on anything else. Unless you can read it in the ordinance and if it says it in there, then that's what it is.
Okay.
If you need clarification, you can come in the office and talk to somebody. But they, they as a council can only tell you if you can change.
I just wanted to do what Randy asked. He said, before you spend the money on this survey, let us find out.
That's all, yeah, that's all you can do right now because that's all you asked for. That's all that's on the agenda.
So if it's okay if we spend them like this, stage one. And then two would be the next stage of having the architect and Clint to draw the whole one. And then we would run those plans through state approved commercial building. Oh, I was gonna ask you something. There was something else on the agenda. If we do this, will you give us the water and sewer on each lot that look like we have there? Five quarters?
Yeah, and so we can't come here. We do that every day.
Okay. Beneficial to no.
Yeah, no.
Why would you need five?
One for each, one for each lot.
But I've, nothing's being built on that, the big L.
No, you use this section just like this. All this is a common area. Has to be owned by this because.
Yeah, it has a bathroom.
Oh, okay.
Counsel?
I make a motion, we let him flip the lines around, put this horse to sleep.
I'll second.
Motion made second for the lot line adjustment request from Alan Lamb. Any other counsel discussion? All agree, right?
Right.
opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Next item, fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25 audit contract with Nicole Dunin. Contract in front of you there, contract would be audited 24 and 25. It's a $20,400.
That contract may have, we have to have a contract in place before the end of June. That contract may be amended because if we have less than $300,000 in revenue at the end of June. We do not have to have a fiscal year 25 audit, but we won't know until the end of June. And it has a lot to do with the lower projects, so.
So we're just right there at the, at the edge of it. So, but we gotta have a contract in place to fulfill the commitments. So the contract might just be thrown out, so.
I made a motion. We award Nicole Dunin the fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25 audit contract.
I second the motion.
Motion made second, any discussion? All agree, right?
Right.
Opposed. Next item, fiscal year 25 annual financial report contract with Magna Nelson. It's the same contract she does every year for us on the AFR, which we have to do every year. And the contract is for... Where did I see the dollar?
Two thousand something.
Two thousand something, yeah.
Twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty? $2,250.
I make a motion, we award Magna Nelson fiscal year 25 annual financial report contract.
I second the motion.
Motion made second, any counsel discussion? All agree, right?
Right.
Opposed. Motion carried. Public comment?
I just have, uh, since there've been, they're canceling all those contracts and stuff. It's, are we still in the clear not having any of ours be impacted? Doge Musk, all that stuff. I know other towns are coming into problems because they're having grants that they thought they had drift away.
Has any federally funded lots affected at this time?
Nothing is affecting.
Just wanted to keep an eye on with it.
No. I, I told my friends in DC and they said that they hear one.
Yeah, right.
Nothing, nothing we have to go over right now is.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
The only one that was going to be affected was one from fire department. And they gave us a drop in date like a week later. So we just got the money spent.
Okay.
You had till a certain time. They, they told you had a time that it was gonna go away. If the money wasn't spent, so you gotta spend, so. Anyone else? No? Tired you out? There's gonna be a guy in the crowd that wants to talk about something in part.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, he told me.
Wake up!
No, I talked to my, got my thing in Tuesday night. It was too late. He said, you just make an announcement, but I'll go there.
So, uh, uh, we have a citizen who would like to install a pet waste or some badgy thing or something.
Please do.
Yeah.
And I thought it's not really, I didn't really come to the meeting and do all that. We just went. I was just even taking care of it.
Please do.
Yeah, so.
Are there deer waste receptacles?
Oh, yeah, no deer waste. That's my yard.
I don't really want to get one if you can train the deer to use.
I could do that.
Hell, yeah.
How about a bear?
So I, and I mentioned, when he mentioned to me, I had mentioned that I would install it. And, and, you know, my talk, he said that the people that work there maybe would want to install it.
The, the city crew would install, I mean, it just.
What's that?
The city crew could install that.
Well, that, it might be better because they know where probably the best.
They got an auger and concrete mixer and all that. They can just come down with.
Oh, it's not that. You just attach it to something. It's real simple, yeah.
They're just like those little green basket things?
Little basket things, yeah. And there's room for a few extra bags inside of it. And then I also got a, another box of bags to, so I have to service that from time to time.
And then we just put that trash can right next to it because people.
Right next to trash can?
Well, I'm just saying, I, I used to live in Missoula on Blue Mountain and people use the little bags. And then they set it along the trail and then just walk away.
And they ever think about, yeah, box phone, let me do that. But yeah, you see that quite a bit on the, on the package. They're gonna get them on the way back, but they forgot.
They forget or they, right, yeah. So you have these little plastic bags everywhere.
So I have that with me tonight. I can drop it off in the office or go buy it another time and.
No, it'll be fine. We, we'll take care of it tonight.
Just take, just.
We want the office, Tony will help you with that.
Just catch me whenever you're ready and we'll take care of it.
Okay, good. Sounds great.
Anything else? Motion adjourned.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn, I second it.
All, they ride?
Aye.